This is the meeting of the Southwick Library Trustees on January 14, 2020.
Okay, I don't see any public input tonight. So we'll just move on from there. Communications.
Okay. So Hoopla has been off to a strong start, I think. Since we kicked off January 1st, we've had 16 new patrons borrow 36 items, which is pretty good. I'm happy with that and we'll just continue to see how it goes. We are, I'm working, now that we're a member of the Greater Westfield Chamber of Commerce, I'm doing a couple outreach things with them to hopefully connect with local businesses in the area. And we're also going to be doing kind of like a pop-up library at the American Inn and just bring some of our like large print things, audiobooks over there and see. See if it's a hit and if not, then it's not, but at least we tried. And we can also get our laptops to like check things in and out remotely. We can register people for cards remotely. So we can do pretty much everything we do here, just on the go. So we'll give that a shot and see how that goes. Maria, tell me if I'm going too bad.
Of course you're good.
We had, back in the end of December, we had Anna from the Massachusetts Library System come in and I thought it would be nice for the staff to just kind of get, since we're starting new outreach things and with Hoopla, we've got a lot of new stuff. I figured it would be kind of nice for everybody to kind of sit down for like a brainstorming session on marketing and just ways of kind of get the library out there, get more people coming in, get more people to notice us. And I figured, and they really liked it. It was a good like morale booster. They were really enthusiastic about it. So we had that class one December afternoon. We are working on the Shirtlift Grant, which is due March 1st. Heather P. and Paige are coming up with different ideas of things to apply for for the children's and YA sections. I am going to begin working on the Town Report that is due in February, early February. Do you guys need to officially approve that before we submit it or?
We usually don't even see it.
Okay.
It would be, it would be nice to get a copy before we read the annual Town Report in May.
Okay, I can do that.
Wait, stop one second if you said, okay. The Shirtlift Grants that you are doing March, you said?
Yep.
Okay, and that was, what was your next comment?
The next comment was the Town Report.
Ah, okay.
I'm going to work on that too and give you all a copy. And we are meeting with the finance, we have a meeting with the Finance Committee February 22nd for our annual presentation time at, I think it's 8:30 in the morning on a Saturday.
What's the date, March?
Yeah, February 22nd.
February.
That's good. Actually, yeah.
Your birthday.
You're early, so.
And what, what time was it again?
8:30.
8:30. But then when they start Mike, 8:30?
Yeah.
Oh, wow, nice. And then the last thing, the town is doing an ADA survey and they were here on Saturday. They had the representative going through and just checking things and then.
Disability, yeah?
Yes.
Okay, my first thought went to Dennis something.
So, and then they've, they've asked us to fill out a report about our services and just making sure that we're ADA compliant. And I think the only thing that we could really probably use is, and I don't think anybody's ever asked for it, but it wouldn't hurt to have, is some type of equipment or something. Somebody wanted to come to a program and they were hard of hearing or, or anything like that, but.
Now, this is the official organization that's coming in, not that one man.
No, this is, I think it's the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is doing this for the town so the town can say they've done a survey so they comply for certain state money.
Because there was one man that, a couple of years ago, yeah, that was just causing trouble on purpose. He'd go places just with a yardstick and measure everything coming around. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I guess this guy was very good on Saturday. He doesn't sound like him.
If anything evident, I can write you an official letter because my, we love it. My own workplace loves it here.
Great.
Everybody's friendly, they're welcome and there's places, not all of them place in this town, but other libraries and other towns and some cities, they're not very welcoming. And I have someone with a walker, I have people with wheelchairs, I have people with ducts, so we.
You can drive right in with a wheelchair that you can't do at some libraries.
Yep, yeah, it's very, the physical layout's very user-friendly for that. I think the only thing we could probably use is some adaptive equipment. Just, I don't, I don't know about pricing, but it might be something good to have just in case.
Yeah.
So that report, the representative from the ADA is going to be at the Department Head Meeting on Thursday, so we'll probably hear if there's anything that he saw that concerned him. But from the sounds of it, it went pretty good. And that is all from me for that section. The minutes look good to everybody. I didn't see anything.
I got the facts right, at least. I don't know about the spelling and everything, but I think the facts are okay.
The only thing I saw, and I know what it means, but I'm not sure.
What's that?
Under library gift policy. We have one, I'm sure you're referring to a policy.
Right.
We have one to donate items, but who's donating? Are we the donating or personal, you know, a patron donating? It just was unclear.
Oh.
Even though we know what it means, someone else might not if. It just was a little awkward, I thought.
For patrons to donate. We have a policy for patrons to donate items.
Yep.
That's all we need.
I just think it's clear.
That's fine, that's fine.
Piggy, piggy.
A number four of the new business.
Okay.
Shouldn't it be Marco is retiring?
Yeah.
Oh, is that an R?
That's a T.
T.
Oh, I don't think she uses a T.
Oh, I, for some reason.
Yeah, I thought there was a T on it.
I thought there was a T too. I thought it was a French name.
I don't, I feel like there's no T.
That may, there maybe there isn't.
Looking for something in front of me to check.
If I'm reading a book and there's someone named Marco, that's how I pronounce it when I see M-A-R-G-O-T.
I wrote it without thinking about it.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's M-A-R, no T.
All these years. Well, does last month's agenda have her name on it?
I can always check too and just send it to you tomorrow morning.
Yeah, you could do that, sure.
Yeah, so just wait for my email.
How do you spell your name?
Yeah. After 20 years, how do you spell your name? Okay.
Okay, do we want to approve it?
Motion to accept.
Still moved.
Is amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we'll move on to a director's report.
Do you guys have the December statistics? Can you just pass me one too? I forgot, I forgot what it was. Overall, it seems to be a good, good month, I think. We got some very nice donations from patrons for the holidays. It's tricky, you know, I had it sitting in a heavy pile of stuff, so it got flat.
So moving on to old business.
There is no old business that I noted. So new business, we met with the Select Board last week about changing Marco's position to full-time and they, they were in favor.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
And so I would say so was the Finance Committee tonight. We were there just an hour ago and they were in favor too. Basically, it seems like it's, now is the time to do it if we're going to do it. So I think the case makes sense.
So it's a definite thing then, it's.
Not.
It's, it's close. It's never definite until you see it in writing.
But I mean, we don't, it doesn't have to come up in the elections or anything or presented to the town or whatever. That's good.
It'll be just part of the, the budget that comes to the annual town meeting, hopefully.
And so you said that, like the Select Board is meeting tonight as well and it was on their agenda too?
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe I'll hear something more after tonight.
The one thing I noticed on here on the budget, do you need to make sure that you've got a number, third item down, enough money to cover it?
For what?
In other words, adding the extra person, the.
Yes, it's, I, I calculated this. Everything I calculated out, even the level funded budget is written as if that position is 37 and a half.
Beautiful. I just want to make sure that somebody wouldn't say, oh, but we passed these numbers. It wasn't in it.
Okay.
And I assume this you didn't submit to the vote?
No, I have not submitted anything in. These are, these are my notes for you guys to look at. The one I copy over will be much, much lighter.
So the total budget is 452, is level funding, and 459 is the increase.
Yeah, and, and that is using, it's, it's level funded, it would be 452, but that includes the salary increases that the union.
Right.
So the salary is at the very top. I think, we were supposed to leave that blank, but I wrote it in anyway because
Right.
it doesn't make sense, because we have to figure out what 20% of our budget is for the municipal, they're not the, for the materials expenditure.
Right.
But we can't do that unless we have salaries.
Right.
So this, that's basically how I wrote it out. The salaries, mine is written in my contract. Melinda from accounting said they usually give the Assistant Director 2%. So that's what I factored in for Heather's. And then the, under the part-time salaries, that is everything. And Heather P. is 37 and a half as well and she's lumped under part-time salaries. So I put Marco's in there as well.
Right.
Because it kind of represents all the union salaries and those we don't have a control over. So that's what it would be.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, so that's, that's the update on the children's position. Hopefully hearing back more after this evening. The plumbing issue, we've.
Yeah, what's going on there?
It was a week or two ago that we noticed the drains in the bathroom floor were backing up. Bob looked at it, said it's most, it was sand and water, potentially some insulation in there as well because it was kind of green. So they, they snaked the drain, they fixed that. Then there was an issue with the water pressure, that's been fixed. But then they were here again today. There was a leak in one of the, in one of the bathrooms, the valves. So that's been fixed too. So they've been here quite a lot, but.
Because I noticed about a week ago, there were two town trucks sitting out in the parking lot.
Yep, they've been, they've been here a lot.
And I, I saw Bob at Walmart and he said something about, well, the toilets are okay now. I had no idea what he was talking about.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, so we've, we've had a little bit of an issue with the plumbing, but as of today, it's the, I didn't get a chance to catch Bob as he left. But I'm hoping to touch base with him to just see, we're good now. We didn't have the bathrooms for a little while this morning, but, but we're good now. So.
Knock wood.
Knock on wood, I know. And then the town ADA survey, I already mentioned that. And I was working on some of the job descriptions to just kind of update them because they haven't been updated, some of them since 2008. I did not make copies because they're just, it's really basic updates, just one line or two here and there. The young adult position, and I gave everyone a copy of their job description to say, you know, what are, what are you doing that's not on here?
That's very smart.
So, so everybody kind of gave me their feedback on what they, what they think should be added. And so basically the young adult position Heather recommended adding because she does workshops with patrons on, you know, Overdrive and all the, the reading apps and things like that. So she suggested that be on here as well, running technology training. And we updated Heather's, the other Heather, for the Assistant Director, her basic job description. Just to include that, just, and just to make it more clear that she handles the financials and the payroll and she deals that, going back and forth with Town Hall and that aspect to it as well. As well as organizing, you know, the periodicals and maintaining those. And, and the museum passes, basically anything that has an expiration date that she keeps track. And then lastly, Paul's job description for the reference librarian. We just added in a couple things, just, just to update some terminology because I don't, his wasn't done since 2008, so it's been a while. But the main thing we updated was, is that he helps me out with doing the books on the go and he selects the items for that. As well as helping out with the newsletter and, you know, and helping, helping pull things from the collection that are no longer new, things like that. So it's very, very minimal updates for each position, but it just, you know, I think, I think they like to see that it's, and I like to see it too, that it's, what they, what they're doing is actually reflected in, in their job description.
Do you need to vote?
Yep, if you would to vote to approve updates in the young adult librarian, Assistant Director and Reference Librarian positions.
I would do that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And of course, you know, the union positions, it's going to go back to Town Hall, to Labor Council.
Yeah, it's got to go back to, Town Hall is next and then, and then to the, the union itself.
How is the Books on the Go program going?
Good, good, we're really, we're trying to market it a little bit more than it has been. So we do have, I think between, I think there's between seven and nine people on it. But not everybody gets something every session, you know. So they usually make four stops each round. And then we have another patron who's using the Perkins Library through us, so we're getting her special audiobooks with a device that she can keep for as long as she wants to. So we've been working with them as well and they're, they're fantastic. If we want, if we want an audiobook, we can have it in a couple days shipped out from Watertown, Mass. It's, they've been fantastic, so. She's been really liking that service and then if, if we can get the word out that, you know, it's available to other people, it's all free, everything ships for free, it's mailed back for free. All matters, all materials for the blind ships for free, so it's a really great program. And then the last thing was the budget, so. I, and I'm, every town does it differently, so I'm, I'm new to the way you guys do it. But everybody should have a copy with the blue, the blue column is us being level funded and the pink column is what we are requesting. And I think there was a few lines that we did, that we did ask for a slight increase. One, you know, one is like the electricity in the mains things, talking with Bob, he recommended going up. I think it was 2% or something, just to kind of match the increasing costs. And then we also went up in programs to round it out from 2,0750 to 3,000, which would give us enough money for one additional program. But the, and basically the maintenance contracts, minor equipment and supplies were the other ones. We increased these supplies to 5,500 to 6,500 just because the library's seeing a lot of use and we're just, we can't keep up with the supplies. People are printing a lot and printer cartridges aren't cheap. So we were, and right now we're kind of monitoring the budget towards the end of the year. It's getting, it's getting tight. So we're, we're hoping for next year to have a little bit more leeway in that. And the maintenance contracts, that is basically for our annual, the copier, what do they call it? It's been a long day. The agreement, yes, there we go, yes. And I think, I think those were mainly it. And then I did, I did raise the informational materials a little bit as well. Like I said, I don't know how, you know, how many, how often you request increases in line items, you know, here, but, I mean, either way, even if we are, as you can see, our municipal appropriation requirements, 429. So either way, we are going to meet it. And, I mean, either way, either way.
I think you've been very conservative.
Okay, is it good because I?
To me, it looks conservative.
I thought I was spending too much. Because a lot of the things we did keep the same, you know, the dues, the conference and travel. I don't see a need for an increase in that right now.
About consume, uh, consumer, computer line support, you expect to remain the same?
Yep, we expect, we actually had, our CWR's bill for next year is going to be 6,236 and I can't remember what the figure was for this year, but it's, it's a good portion lower that we got.
That, that's because of the small library.
And there was, there was something else that they factored into it too and I, I made a printout, but I didn't bring it with me. But we got that and there was also another discount that it was applied to because I had to write to them and say, is this number right? Because it was so much lower than it has been in the past. So, so I figured, you know, conservatively thinking, I think that number from last year worked us fine and it should work just fine for us again.
Any other new business?
Do we need to express an approval of this?
Yes.
At this point?
We do.
Okay.
What we're submitting.
Yeah, if you, if you feel that the numbers are good, if you feel, and I, and I don't, I don't want to go into my first year presenting the budget being like, we want this, that and the other thing. If you feel like it's, it's conservative, it, it looks good, we're asking for only what we need and nothing more.
$7,000 is not a big.
Yeah.
Not a big, when you're looking at.
Yeah.
$450,000, yeah.
Yeah, and it's, and it's, the difference, it's 452 to 459, it's not, it's not terribly bad. The only, the only thing that's may affect us in the long run is that by having another full-time position, and both of these numbers were calculated as if we had a 37 and a half hour children's position, that having that big jump in a number is going to affect our average for the municipal appropriation requirement.
But nobody understands that except you and me.
Okay. Yeah, and I think, and the only other thing I had was, I was talking with Bob about the outside sign and he recommended it is a capital item. And he said, do you have a price? And I said, no, I have no price in mind. And I, I asked him what he recommended and 10,000 was what, what he recommended.
Would it be an electronic sign instead of?
It could, it.
Manually?
Yeah, I'm open, I'm open to anything.
I think it would be better if you did an electronic where you could just do it from in here.
Because in January, February, you can't get out to the sign.
Right, it's dangerous.
It is, it is a hazard, somebody's, and I did, I, I don't know if, I took some pictures of the sign too to submit with this so that they'll see that, you know, there's cracks and one side you can't lock, which I'm surprised nobody's figured out that they can go in there and rearrange our letters yet, so.
Ooh.
Don't, don't put that in there.
Carol, give me Carol ideas.
Yeah, yeah, so I took some pictures of, it's looking, and the fact that one side can't, is unusable, it just looks bad. So, I mean, I would, I would rather have no sign.
And Jo Dees, it's all about going digital now, so.
I, I did ask him about the price for his sign. We can't, we're not even going to touch that. It was, it's too much, it's too much to consider, so.
At least he responded.
About how much did he spend?
I believe it was $20,000 or so.
Because it, it, you know, it's long and then you got the other part with the name of the business.
He would, he would definitely understand.
The sign over Grismail Plaza costs 21,000 or 22,000.
Yeah, so there's some more conservative number, but I think we could hopefully get something. Something that's not going to injure people, so that's what we can hope for. So, so that's, that's my recommendation for the budget. So I, I don't know how town meetings usually go or, you know, if.
Basically, the public doesn't ask any questions. They go down through various departments, three or four departments at a time. They used to go through every line and then we'd be there till 11:30 or 12 o'clock. So then they went down by department and unless something really sticks out, the public doesn't ask any question. The last couple of years, the library budget has just sailed on through. You know, like two minutes or something.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, because last, I mean, what do we have this, I mean, this year we are, we, our budget was 432, 628. So it's, it's about $20,000 jump, but it's, you know, I mean, if we have a new full-time position and
Right.
that's a lot of it.
Right.
My color-coded spreadsheet for everything. So, yeah, if you, if you think that that looks good, our, our increases are reasonable and justified, then, then we can go ahead and.
10 or 12 years ago, we had to justify increasing information material and we said, the cost of stamps has gone up 3% or 4%. So if you're getting new books, be it US Mail or UPS or whatever, just the cost of shipping, assuming the price of item never changes.
And I mean, and if you look at our statistics from just our, our Director's Report from this month, I mean, our, our usage of materials has increased quite a lot, so.
Yeah, it's not a problem.
Okay, okay.
Forgive me.
All in favor?
Aye.
But you should emphasize how difficult it was.
Should I put any, any names down here for?
Your policy changes.
Oh, yes.
That's always good.
Whatever, and seconding.
Oh, okay.
Whatever the motion was.
Yeah, right, okay. Okay, well, we'll do Carol and Tammy on this one. Okay, I'm unanimous. Okay.
May I point out two things? That might come up, I don't know if it really does. Because just this past couple of days, there was, and I can't remember which town it was, some tiny little town, celebrating the fact that their library was going to be open on weekends. If somebody mentions that, you could say, who heard that, marvelous news? And the other one was that the New York Public Library, I guess, published their list of 10 most popular
Oh, yep.
books, and I'm assuming we have all of them.
I would, I should hope we do.
But half of them are these for kids, for children's books, so I can't, I don't know. The Snow Day was the most popular.
Oh, it's up.
That's all.
Oh, I guess we could do one other thing. Every year you've got to these breakfast legislative events. I found out on the internet, apparently Eastern Mass libraries have coffees instead of breakfast.
Really?
So kind of, you hope the legislator or his or her staff will stop by for a cup of coffee and a donut or something. Well, the one for this legislative district, by senatorial district, refers to his library legislative breakfast in former Senator Humison's district. Since we don't have a state senator at the moment. The election for that will be. Will be March thirty-first. So this year, um, that breakfast is gonna be held at the Holyoke Public Library on Friday, February fourteenth, from eight AM until ten AM.
You have the day off, I could probably go to one.
They're a lot of fun.
So if anyone wants to write down the information, or.
I have the worst.
I'm not awake till ten AM.
Eight to ten, around Friday.
It's a really nice library.
It's on Chestnut Street, two fifty Chestnut Street.
Is that the one where they have the old library and the adren-?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is very nice. It was kind of decrepit before.
I don't remember what it was like before.
Cause we had a library legislative, it was like up in the attic or something, it's like, the place is rough-looking.
Wow.
Yeah, there's an email address.
Do we have to reply through you then, or do we reply to the email?
You can reply, I think you can reply, who's the email?
Nancy. Kupmersky.
I would, I would reply just straight to her, cause you're, you're a trustee, you have that authority, you can write on in.
I'll, I'll give this to you in a second.
Or if anybody wants, I can make copies too, if that's easier.
I just happened to see it the other day. Cause some of the library legislative ones are off in the birch years, and it says, two of the commissioners are gonna be there, which is Janice Resnick and, um, what's her name, from Otis or Beckett or whatever.
Mary?
Ma- Mary.
Yep. Landford, Landford's the one, I think she's.
Yeah, but Landford, that's right. It's just, those are the two that I'm, I'm familiar with. I was happy when they got on the MBLC, so we had some representation from the West.
Did you guys vote to approve this?
Yes.
All right, all right. I'm running behind tonight.
After fish.
And I've already adjourned us, so.
Well, we went to the end of the, of the, uh. Getting back to names again, what are the two Heather's names, last name?
There's, there's Heather Papa rela.
Okay, and she's the.
Young adult.
The Y-A.
Yep, yep, and. And Heather Dunfee.
Okay, I knew it was D, but I didn't know.
It's, it's D-U-N-F-E-E.
Oh, F-E-E. F-E-E?
Yep.
Oh, I put a Y on.
Me too.
Yeah, I thought it was Y too, it's gonna interplay.
Are we, are we officially adjourned?
Yeah.
Okay.
All, all in favor?
Aye.